It's a little Irish.
I do behave like Irish sometimes. I'm the character of it.
I don't know, Cardi. I can't see that. Putting a couple back, I don't know. Oh, boy.
You're live? My turn.
I'm going to call this March 7th work session to order. Roll call, please.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Dorr.
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett. Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Kohler.
Here.
Mrs. Mares.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Fountain. Any questions? All in favor say aye. All against nay. Agenda is approved. We'll move on to a public comment from the audience. If you're on Zoom and you want to do a public comment, please raise your thumb. Jenott? There should be a button to...
Never spoken here before.
There you go.
My name is Jenott. I'm Perkyoma Township. I just came here to make a couple statements tonight. I feel that in this school district, there's been a lot of bullying going on, and we need to address it and get it under control. Also, I feel that when you're on the school board, you need to have the best interests of all students in mind, and I feel that Tammy Campley does not do that, as she got on stand and testified in the plaintiffs, so I'm asking her to resign. Thank you.
Is there anyone else for public comment? Is there anyone else for public comment? Hold on one second, sir.
Yeah, no worries.
Thank you, Mr. Dorr. All right, go ahead, sir.
Keith Frye, Lower Frederick Township. I'm here again tonight as an American patriot and a member of this community, fighting for our freedoms and God-given rights. I no longer have children in this school system, but my wife and I raised three beautiful daughters who all graduated from Perkyoma Valley, and currently my wife is a special education teacher in the district. We love this area, and we love this community. That's why I continue to come to these meetings and fight for our freedoms. It breaks my heart to know these children are being forced to wear masks when the rest of the world is now removing them. Millions of people watch the Super Bowl, where 70,000 people defied the government's order to wear masks. Now it's time for our kids to defy the order as well. The science is out. Cloth masks don't work. They are simply facial decoration and a political statement at this point. I still find it hard to believe the judge's ruling. She decided to remove the voice of the people. This community voted for a change, and we won. This board voted for a change, and they won. Then a ridiculous lawsuit and one judge stripped us of our freedoms and our God-given rights, forced healthy children to wear masks that don't work, all to protect a few children who stand a 0% chance of injury, especially since there were zero students who tested positive last week. I pray Mr. Subers and the legal team will prevail if the suit goes to trial. We cannot let this fearful, weak-minded agenda grow any longer in our schools. We need to let these kids have their freedoms back. School is for learning. Teachers need to worry about how the children are doing with speech and math and English, not if they're properly wearing a mask. The PSSA and the Keystone test results are showing a large decline from 2019 to 2021. Our kids are simply falling behind. I believe it's a direct result from masking, but regardless of what is to blame, the end result is that the children are doing worse. And we as a community need to start doing a better job when it comes to our kids. Let's start showing them love and support and help them become better students, and hopefully we can all start seeing smiling faces again. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the building for public comment?
Ashley Bree, Skipback Township. I'm late to address a few concerns. Last week, an email was sent out to parents about disturbing behavior. Nobody wanted to talk about disturbing behavior until it came with a political twist. We dedicated one day out of 365 to zero discrimination for the LGBTQ community. I'm still waiting on an answer to my comment regarding the AIDS and HIV education for the health and wellness program. I walked into the high school about a month ago for my son's club scout banquet. He's seven. The very first thing we see is this symbol on a newspaper box with all the names of all the people who have been killed by law officers. That symbol has a very emotional and strong message to a variety of societal issues. I'm curious to know, did anybody extend any kind of support to Leo families before you put a target on their kids' backs? That's why you have angry students. That's why you have disturbing behavior, because you create targets, you put them on students, you label them into these buckets of identity politics, and then you back your hands up and go, "We don't understand why it's happening." You're shocked. Don't be shocked. You did this. How inclusive has this district been in the last two years to children with auditory, processing delays, and speech delays? We're not talking about that yet. I've been talking about it for two years. It's not proven yet, but kids are popping up all over the place, regressing like crazy, and we're still ignoring it. Now they have anxiety and other emotional issues to carry with it. You want to use more digital learning material. That's great. I participated in that meeting. If I understood correctly, one set of hard books per grade will be kept. It is a known fact that children learn better from hard books. Our students have spent the last two years with the majority of digital learning material. Our scores look great, not... Lastly, I loved the new programs that were suggested to help our students. What I don't understand is why are we depending on short-term finances for long-term projects? I would think you wouldn't want to jeopardize programs that help students, so why base its life expectancy on federal funds that run out? So before you vote on that, I'd like to know, come 2024, what is the plan?
Hello. Danielle Dury, Perkyoma Township. It's really nice to see all these faces. I guess we all feel so safe now. So I'm going to make a big statement here. Children should have never been burdened with the task of protecting adults. Never. That should have never happened. Never. I lost track. Yeah. I lost track of how many times I heard some of you and many in the community say, "Kids are resilient. They're so resilient. They'll bounce back." They weren't as resilient as some had hoped, because resiliency is never the answer to child abuse. Every one of these children trusted... Everyone these children trusted and believed would protect them, abuse them. It's true. You did. This was abuse. There is no resilience when you're abused and traumatized by those you've been told would always protect you. You sacrifice their development, their education, their mental health to protect adults and make adults feel safe. It was our job to protect them, and when parent after parent came to you and cried and pleaded for you to acknowledge what their kids were going through, you did nothing. You blankly stared at them with zero emotion. You changed the exemption forms to ensure that it would be near impossible to secure an exemption. Forty-five kids in the whole district had exemptions. Five thousand students, forty-five kids. That's ridiculous. You knew doctors weren't going to sign them because it required a license, and people were reporting doctors' licenses. It's ridiculous. It's just unimaginable. They should have been protected. Adults in society fail to protect kids and are complicit in the mass abuse of children. Again, it's true. You can try to sugarcoat it, but that's the truth. The evidence is all around you. Look at the test scores. Look at their suffering. Look at the mental health crisis. That's because of some of you sitting right there. Our community can't heal until you acknowledge your part in what you did to our kids, and we aren't going to let you sweep it under the rug either, so take responsibility and own it so we can all move forward. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the building, in the library that wants to speak for public comment? Yes. Just want to remind you, when you come up, you don't have to be too close to the microphone. Thank you.
Shelley Burke, Perkyoma Township. I don't have anything prepared. I just... I kind of wish my daughter would come and speak and let you all know exactly how the children are feeling. At our bus stop just the other day, the kids were laughing at the fact that they don't have to wear a mask on the bus, but once they go to school, they have to wear a mask. All-night activities, no mask. Isn't this a bit much? It's a bit much. I know our hands are tied with court case, but this is just flat-out ridiculous. You know? At this point, it's really just ridiculous. I hear the kids, like I was saying at the bus stop, making fun of the situation. These are elementary school kids, by the way, that are just, you know, making fun of the situation, that it doesn't make any sense. Then there was a dodgeball tournament this weekend. I mean, there were so many people playing a sport in each other's face. None of this makes sense anymore. I just want normalcy for my daughter and for the rest of the community. That's all I have.
Is there anyone else in the building? Seeing... okay. If you're on Zoom, if you could raise your thumb now if you want to speak, so we'll know.
Donde Fury, Trapboro. I just came tonight... Let's not forget that our children have been watching what's been happening from the very beginning. As adults, it's hard to make sense of things that are happening right now. They know how crazy it is that they can take their masks off at school at 3:00, but they have to sit there for eight hours a day with their masks on. Let's not forget that our children can go to a restaurant and sit and eat amongst their peers and even strangers if they really wanted to at a table, but they have to sit with their desks spread apart from one another, and in some schools, saying that they're really not even supposed to talk that much. People ask me why I come to the meetings and speak, and my answer is to show support for our board members who voted for masks optional for our children. I'm grateful. To show support for the teachers that come to these meetings and speak out for our students, to be there for other mothers whose children are still suffering and struggling due to these restrictions, and to remind those of you on this board who voted to mask our kids time and time again that this never should have happened in the first place. Parents should have always been able to exempt their children. So I want to just remind everybody to remember this moving forward. I feel like I've listened to Dr. Russell and Mr. Subers. You know, I feel like you've realized this, but I don't know that everyone has. But our kids are smart enough to know that if they can play dodgeball, if they can be in a musical, if they can just be in these crowds without masks and on the bus, there's really no reason they can't be learning in school without a mask on. This has just insulted their intelligence. Again, I've said everything probably a thousand times before, but my message is just remember this, because I don't think we'd be in this situation. We're one of... I think we're the last district in Montgomery County. Our children are wearing masks every day, and they see how unfair this has been to them, and it didn't have to be this way. If parents would have had a choice and they could have exempted their own kids out. And then everyone sitting here tonight not wearing masks, which is great. This is great, but our kids don't have this privilege. So let's just remember this moving forward so we don't end up in the same situation again, and we can just all learn from the mistakes that we made. And I see people rolling their eyes, and that pains me, and I wish our children were brave enough to speak at this podium so you can really see the damage this has done, because you really have no idea. Again, that's not directed at the people who voted for masks optional. I hope... Again, that's not directed at the people who voted for mask option, and I hope someday, when you realize what happened, you can just look back and say, "You know what? We learned from it, and we'll do better." Because talking to kids about what has happened, it's heartbreaking.
Anyone else here in person wanna speak?
Hi. My name is Suzanne Vernaccio, Wharley, Perkyomen Township. This is, I've been in this school district for seventeen, eighteen years. Two of my girls already graduated. I have one in ninth grade. This is the first meeting I've come to. This is the first time I felt the need to come out because of what is going on. I've let a lot of stuff just slide. I've sat quietly. I've kept my mouth shut for seventeen years. I'm done with this. The, the stuff that is going on is just utterly ridiculous. No school should... It's my kid. It's not your kid. It's my kid. And if I want her to come to school without a mask on, I should be allowed to sign a form that she come to school without a mask on. I'm really mad about this lawsuit. We cannot sue the school district because people didn't get their way. You, you, you can't do that. It's a frivolous lawsuit. There's, there was no damage. There was no violation. It's, people didn't get their way, they weren't happy. If we all did this, oh my gosh, we'd be, we'd all be in court. I mean, that, this is utterly ridiculous. The other thing I wanted to talk about, um, what Jen had spoke about, the bullying. Two kids graduated, both bullied. One to the point we had to go to court. In school, school does nothing. My kid stands up for herself, yells back at the kid, "Who gets suspended?" My kid, not the bully, had to go to court. School wouldn't even look at the emails and the stuff this other person was doing for a judge to see it and realize what the heck was really going on. Police involved. It was, it was just ridiculous. There is a problem. It seems to be, from my experience, from all three of my girls, it starts in middle school. It starts in middle school, and I think, and it's a lot with girls. Just giving you my experience, if this helps anything, um, I think there's an insecurity in girls where they feel the need, I, to make themselves feel better by picking on someone, either that one of their friends don't like, for any reason, for what they wear. It, it needs, it does need to be something, the bullying that's going on, I feel, you know, the school doesn't, it, it kinda felt like you didn't wanna get involved. But when my kid sorry, spoke up, you know, she's the one that got suspended. And it took a court to realize she was right, the other girl was wrong. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else inside the building? Who's the first one? Ms. McGinn? If you can unmute yourself?
Sorry. Um, hi, I'm Diana McGinn from Perkyomen Township. Um, I just wanted to hop on, just because I understand that there was talk at the last education committee about dissolving Viking Academy, specifically the elementary virtual classes. I absolutely understand that the district is placed in a situation where, of course, they have to do a strictly responsible mechanic comedy, you know, just in handful of kids in a class virtually. However, um, I wasn't sure how many, you know, Viking Academy parents actually attended that meeting to speak about, you know, the experience for us, um, you know, because Viking Academy this year has been our, our little school. And last year, while it wasn't Viking Academy, you know, we did have the, our own little community. And I know that, you know, it got laced in with a lot of political stuff, but I know for myself personally, um, it was never political, it was never, never to reflect political views, but really, in my family's case, to combat, um, you know, to, to deal with COVID and having, having, um, people who are more susceptible in the household. But, um, I've come to learn through, you know, the past two years, that it's really been a solace for families, having nothing to do with COVID. And I hope in time that admin and the board and, you know, leadership in general will sit down with the Viking Academy parents and talk about why this worked in a lot of ways and why we felt our children were protected beyond COVID. And, you know, I'm hearing multiple people talk about bullying and, um, you know, I have to be honest with you, having had a lot of discourse with, with the virtual parents, that a lot of us, in seeing the climate of our community, um, have felt that our children were in a better spot, not just with COVID, but also with, you know, just not having to feel any of that, um, in the safety of their home. And I can tell you that, you know, a lot of us did make sacrifices with traditional schooling and elements of that, but our children were all treated kindly, and we can assure that. And I just hope that that is something that, you know, can be considered and talked about a bit more. But, um, you know, aside from recognizing, you know, the fact that I'm, I'm always grateful that this option was put out by Dr. Russell out of the gate, um, it's definitely an extra element for admin to have to worry about, and none of them ever imagined themselves overseeing and managing cyber school, but they did, and I'm grateful. But, um, you know, and obviously, our kiddos and the parents who committed to this truly did make a commitment that made all the difference to its success. I always say, nobody should have been forced to be virtual, only those really saw it working. And, um, a lot of our kids saw success. And, and above all, you know, the most important recognition to me is that of the teachers that made this work the past two years. They have been unknown, somebody who knows the inside of a cyber school, and I can tell you that they've had to work tenfold, um, with the amount of effort they had to put in to keep, um, in lockstep with their in-person colleagues.
Thank you very, thank you, thank you very much.
I didn't realize my time was up. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to reports and presentations. We have a special presentation, annual special education report. Mrs. Boyd, Dr. Boyd?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to present this evening. What I will be sharing is an update of our special ed programming and what we offer in the district. And according to Policy 113, annually, we are required to offer a presentation to the school board that shares information about the programming that we offer, the supports and services that our children receive, as well as the staffing needs that we may find that we need as we move into the upcoming school year. So this evening, the information that I'll be sharing are some, some checks and balances that guide special ed programming for the district. I'll talk about the continuum of services that we offer, specifically around inclusive practices, share some updates around extended school year and COVID compensatory services, and what that will look like for the upcoming summer, as well as the staffing requests that we'll be putting to the board. So with regard to the checks and balances, this year is rather unique. All three of these processes are taking place. Every year, we have our December one count, which is really a snapshot in time as of December first, for the number of students that are receiving special education supports and services across the district. There's a number of different reports and data that we collect that need to be submitted to the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and again, that occurs every year. What's new this year is the cyclical compliance monitoring, which we have moved through that process. It started at the beginning of the school year and took us through February, and that occurs once every six years. And then we are also working on the special education plan. Again, the original timeline was due probably a year or so ago, and it was interrupted with the pandemic. It was pushed back, and we're moving through that process this year. So again, here's the cyclical compliance monitoring. Again, just a reminder of the process that we moved through. We had, I believe, six people onsite in February. They reviewed about four thousand documents. They interviewed parents, teachers, administrators. There were surveys that were issued prior to the onsite visit, and then during the onsite visit, there were classroom observations. All parents of special education students were, offered the opportunity to complete the survey, and we had approximately two hundred and fifty parents respond to the, to the survey information. The surveys were open to our gen ed teachers and our, our special education teachers. It was not open to our related service providers, nor our paraprofessionals. It was solely teachers. Um, and then our students that were surveyed were our students that are age fourteen years and older, um, and so that was done during the school day. With regard to the interviews, uh, the Bureau of Special Education selected ten students that they would closely review their files, they would conduct classroom visits of those students, and they would interview those students' teachers, as well as those students' parents. So that's, it was really selected by the Bureau of Special Education. We had no control over that, and what they tried to do was take a sampling of students across the, the various disability categories. Again, I don't need to read this, but you can see the preliminary findings. There were minimal areas that they found that we will need to correct, and we will receive a final report in about three to six months, so sometime close to the end of the school year or for the start of the next school year. Once we get that information, if there's any areas of corrective action, we will need to create an action plan and submit that to PDE. The next piece is the special ed plan, which is underway, and again, this just really lists those components that we're required to complete. And again, the state gives us direction on that. They identify the areas. They either ask for specific data and numbers, or we are asked to provide a narrative response, and these are some of those categories. We then get into the specific programming within our buildings, and we talk about our program profile, the number of students per caseload, the types of services, uh, related services, the number of staff that we employ, and whether or not we have contracted services as well to deliver some of, um, the supports that our students may need. Following that, we also are required to develop a personnel development plan. So this is done in conjunction with Mrs. Smith and the full comprehensive plan, but there are specific areas that are called out. And on the board here, you can see that there's seven specific categories that we need to address with, uh, personnel development. And again, originally, this was supposed to be presented to the school board in March, and then PDE pushed it back. So what I've presented here is a timeline in terms of what you can expect to see. We anticipate that next month, we will bring a, a draft of the plan to the board for your review. If you approve that plan, then it will go out for public comment. It needs to be out for public comment for twenty-eight days. At that point, then we bring it back. If there's any comments, any questions, we need to respond to that, potentially do any revisions or updating to the plan, and then we hope to bring that plan to the board at the June board meeting for approval, so that it can be submitted by the end of July. It also gives us a little bit of a buffer in case there's anything that needs revisions. And with that said, so this plan that we are working on will take us through the 2023 school year, and then we will be required by the end of next school year to have our next plan presented. So we will be moving through this exact same process next year, and I'll be coming back to you a little bit sooner, most likely in the winter months, again, with that targeted timeline. So you'll, you'll be seeing me again and hearing more about the same thing. And again, this is just a real quick reminder of what December one count is, that I've already shared, and the link is here, that if you would like to go to the Penn Data site to see our last annual report, you may do so. Uh, again, that information was submitted December first this year, but we will not have that report until May or into the following year to know how we, um, have done. All of that information, all of that being said, really takes us into everything else we do, our continuum of services, our staffing, um, the trainings that we offer. And it's really has been a journey. This is not something that's a once and done. It's not lockstep. It, it builds upon each year. So what I've tried to do here is really just lay out some of that journey that we've been traveling down. When I came into this role, it was the seventeen, eighteen school year, and we were looking back at the, the data that we had was sixteen, seventeen, and I do have a, a slide to show you. We took a look at a broad scale and saw that, you know, we were including kids, but we had things we could improve upon, and it prompted us to ask questions. And since that time, these are some of the steps that we've taken intentionally to move through. What do we do? What do we offer students so that they can each be successful and included to the greatest extent possible, so that they're successful and that they're growing? I don't need to read over all of this, but there's, you know, a lot of things that happened, again, in the nineteen twenties school year, and we were interrupted mid-year, but we did continue with many of those efforts. In the 2021 school year, we did make shifts in our AS programming, our autistic support at the elementary level, and we put the K-1, 2 at Skipback Elementary and kept grades three to five at South Elementary. Um, and again, this year, then, we've moved in, we've continued to expand upon co-teaching. We've taken a deeper dive in terms of scheduling and what we look at. We try, we have a behind-the-scenes coding system where we look at students, and case managers and teacher identify what is their academic need, and then we begin to schedule them so that we can work for natural proportions and identify the appropriate accommodations, modifications, co-teaching sections, push-in supports, and those types of things to offer to our students. This is a quick at-a-glance. Uh, I believe I presented something similar last year, and this just gives you a quick snapshot. This was as of December one, the number of students that were identified as students receiving special education supports and services, the number of paraprofessionals, the number of teachers, and then the average caseloads for our learning support, uh, cases. For our district programs, our autistic support, our emotional support, our life skills support, those class sizes or caseloads, I should say, are smaller, and they are set by the state. So they are no more than twelve students to a caseload. So I did not include those caseloads in this average. Again, this is for our learning support caseloads. And again, when we talk about the continuum of services, we talk about least restrictive environment to the most restrictive, and this pyramid really just shows you the types of supports that we offer as we move through that continuum. Really, what we do is we always start with a general education classroom. That's what the law states. Children should be included with their non-disabled peers to the greatest extent possible with the appropriate supports and services. So we start there, and we move forward through that continuum based on what a child may need. And what this slide represents really is the offerings that we have through the district. So all of our buildings offer learning support classrooms. We have placed our district-wide programs across our schools, and then this shows you where those classrooms are located across the district. And again, I've called out autistic support and intensive learning support. This comes up later when we talk about the staffing request that we're making for an autistic support teacher for Middle School East. Right now, autistic support students filter to Middle School West, and right now, there's one teacher that is, uh, teaching instructional, I'm sorry, autistic support and intensive learning support. And that has to do with the level of needs of those students and the ability to put the, the mixture of children together. That changes from time to time as the needs of the children change. And what we are noticing and what we have coming up is we have a cohort of autistic support students that will transition from fifth grade to sixth grade for next year, but the level of their need is intensive autistic support programming, and they won't be able to be combined, um, with the intensive learning support. So that, that's what comes into play there. And just a reminder that we do service students from kindergarten through graduation. For some of our students, our students with the greatest need, they will remain with us until they're age twenty-one. So we do have a population of students that are beyond the typical graduation age and remain with us at the high school, and we do offer supports to them. But that all begins with our early intervention process. That is well underway right now. It starts in about December of every school year, and it will take us through May. We have met with all of our families, we've reviewed some of their needs, and now we're moving into the evaluation, and then in the spring, we will be moving to develop IEPs. And what you can see right now is the project, the projections for next year. We have approximately thirty students that are moving through this process. We're anticipating that we will have eight students that will require our district-wide autistic support programming. Again, that's not solidified yet, but it is a rough number. Um, we have two students that we believe will need our intensive, um, learning support, which is housed at Schwankstedt Elementary, and we are aware of one child that is already in an approved private school setting and most likely will continue in that, in that placement. And again, then the other students that are not accounted for are moving through that evaluation process. So as we have information and should... So as we have information and should anything change with regards to our numbers and our programming, we will be bringing that to the board. I know there's a lot of information, and I'll try to move through this rather quickly. One of the things I mentioned that this has been a journey that we've been moving through. And part of our investigation has really been around what are the service delivery models that we offer to our students when we talk about the least restrictive environment? How can we support them? So this chart really demonstrates for you the various types of service delivery that can occur. It's not the same in every building. We don't use all of these necessarily. But this, these are the, the service models that, that we typically will try to move through. And I did just want to call out that we do have an inclusion facilitator. I did highlight it in orange that we have a district-level inclusion facilitator. We could move through to different types, but we have chosen to have a district-level facilitator. And then over the last few years, we have also added coaches, instructional coaches to support our teachers across all of our buildings. And then this slide really shows you the typical progression of service delivery that we tend to see in most of our buildings. We start, like I said, with the general education classroom. We have para-support. We really appreciate our paraprofessionals. They are, excuse me, an invaluable resource to us. Push-in support, co-teaching, pull-out, and replacement. And when we get to replacement, I did make a note there that oftentimes, those are our students with the most, the greatest need. But we also use alternate state standards. Those are our students that typically take the PASA instead of the PSSA. So it's a slightly different set of expectations that we hold for those students. And that takes us to our inclusive practices. Again, we read our mission statement. And we really have tried to focus on our mission statement and creating an inclusive community. And I mentioned this before, when I first came in, the data that I was looking at was the sixteen, seventeen school year. And each year, we continue to take that deeper dive into what's working. How do we support our students in the most inclusive environment to meet their needs so that they are growing and they can be successful? And more recently, we've really talked about inclusion not just being a special education initiative, but really an all-school, all-district initiative. It's about inclusion. It's about equity. And again, we have to talk about who's not with us for us to be equitable. Which takes us to this slide. And I know Mrs. Smith has shared this multiple times. We've seen this. This year, we are focusing on culturally responsive pedagogy. Next year, our professional learning focuses on inclusive practices. And then year three will be high-impact strategies. But what I'd like to mention, while we are calling each of these topics out specifically, they really are integrated and we continue to try to weave them together. And then I've just outlined how we have defined inclusive practices. And again, it's about equal access and opportunities for students who may otherwise be excluded or marginalized. It is not just our special education students. And along those lines, I guess this year, we're doing culturally responsive pedagogy. Last school year, we worked with our administrative team around understanding that, that topic. This year, we're doing the same thing with inclusive practices. And our administrative team is also moving through some training and professional learning. So these are just some pictures of our administrators as we are engaging with inclusive practices. Again, now, this is specific to special education. And the question for really, why do we include our students? Why do we want this? We know that data supports higher achievement when students are included. And some of this information was shared in our annual data presentation, and I have called it out. When we look at all of our students, there was a twenty-one percent decline. So again, I am not touting that we've made increases. I do recognize that we have had decline in our scores for our students. We all recognize that. We've heard our audience speak to that. We have shared that specifically at our annual data presentation. But here we have our ELA for all students at the middle level. Same students, consecutive grades, a twenty-one percent decline. Our special education students had a thirteen percent decline. In math, a similar trend. All students, a thirty percent decline. Our special education students, a twenty-two percent decline. I attribute that to inclusion, inclusive practices, and co-teaching. And here are some pictures of our elementary classrooms. These are, with the exception of the lower right-hand corner, these are examples of co-taught classrooms where we have a special education teacher and a gen ed teacher with our students. You can see them working in small groups. You see some students in a partner work. In the bottom-left corner, you see a teacher working with a student, and you see another student at the desk working on some independent work. And what you can't see clearly, but on the screen that's projected, what the teachers have done is during their common planning time, they've identified the groups of students, how they will move them through the rotations, and that's posted so that the students know exactly where they are supposed to go. In the bottom-right-hand corner, that is a kindergarten classroom. And that is a para-supported classroom. So we see the teacher leaning down there and working with a student. And they are working on foundations. And the teacher is supporting that student with tapping out a word. Here is just some examples of co-teaching at the high school level. And you can see that students are either working in small groups or in some sort of a station rotation. And then the pictures in the middle show how work has been accommodated and modified so that all students can access the, the information. Again, same, same concepts, but modified and accommodated to meet the students where they are. Why inclusion? Because we want to prepare our students to be successful beyond high school. We want them to achieve whatever their post-secondary choice may be. This is a picture of one of our students working for California Closets, earning high school credit and being rather successful. So we're excited about that. When we talk about high school and we talk about transition, really, there's three areas in transition. It is about the post-secondary education and training. It's about employment, and it's also about independent living skills. So we have a variety of services and supports in place for our students depending on what it is they are looking to do. We look at this as a way to bridge relationships, to build partnerships, and to focus on student strengths. This is again, just a few years ago, we started the Perk Up Cafe at the high school. And here are some pictures of our students actually serving a teacher and getting ready to deliver some of the coffee. They've moved into tea and iced coffee this year. I hear it's quite good. I have not had the opportunity to taste it. But it's more than just preparing the items and distributing them to our staff. It's also about students taking inventory, determining what materials they need, and then a breakdown of the task analysis. Something else, we are in year two. We have partnered with Integrate for Good. And this is again, transition services. But we select six to eight students last year as well as this year. They will bring in a variety of speakers, guest speakers, whoops, I'm sorry. A variety of guest speakers for our students to learn more about opportunities in the community. And then the, one of the big takeaways is each student will create a digital portfolio that helps them for employment or post-secondary opportunities. The other reason is really overall for us to create a sense of community and a sense of belonging. Last year, again, despite the pandemic, we were able to initiate our first unified sports team for track and field. And these are just some pictures from last year. We're moving into this year's season. This is a quote from Coach Whitman. It really was quite a magical year. And what we just had last week was our peer buddies polar pop, where they created, I think it's called PV Team Freeze. And it was freezing for a reason. And they raised over eight thousand dollars. So part of being, bringing unified sports to a school district, we are also held to, they, they want us to have at least two school-wide events each year. Last year, we really were not able to do that with the pandemic. But this year, we have this in place, and this, this just occurred. So there's pictures here. The kids got popped, and then staff and the peer buddies also got popped. And then they had a swim in the pool as well, so they had an open swim. So the kids really, really enjoyed that last week. And then, I don't know if I can, can I, Dr. Russell, can you click on that for me? The peer buddies. We have a peer buddies course at the high school, and this is part of the course catalog. So I just wanted to share this.
In our second year, in this class, we work one-on-one with each student in the classroom. It's a fun and safe learning environment for everyone. And we help students further reading and writing skills in all periods. It helps take notes and bring notes during instruction. It's also a super fun.
It's very fun.
It's amazing to be a parent in class and helping with any extra work that happens.
And we're also excited that our teachers can get extra work done and pay extra attention to the student.
Hi, I love peer buddies because it helps special education kids interact. And it includes welcoming everyone to the peer buddy.
Being a peer buddy is a super rewarding ticket to help the students manage their emotions and work through difficult situations.
I like being a peer buddy because it can connect people with students and bond over similarities that we share.
I love peer buddies because it helps me be friends with special education kids in school.
And I love peer buddies because it helps support inclusion at PPE.
I took this class because I really like helping people, and I thought it would help give me new experiences.
I was thinking of peer buddies class because we can help out the kids and experience social environment.
I think it's really cool seeing the students grow and learn with what we teach.
Hi, love buddy.
So I just wanted to share that. That was shared with me, so I thought that would be a nice thing to share with the board and our community here this evening. Again, those were some pictures as well of our peer buddies interacting with the students. And so extended school year and COVID compensatory services. We tried to implement COVID compensatory services last summer and just simply could not staff that service. So extended school year, again, it's required by law. It's a service that extends beyond the hundred-and-eighty school day. Students qualify on this based on seven factors of eligibility. And it's based on their IEP goals and meant to maintain those skills. We're moving through that now, that process of identifying the students that will attend ESY for this summer. And then the plan is, is to offer it for one month, really from June twenty-seventh through July twenty-seventh, Monday through Thursday. Last year, we held it at South Elementary. We're going to continue that this year. We do have part-time and full-time. And again, it depends on what a child may need and what they qualify for so that we can enroll them in either the two or the four-day program. And then for COVID compensatory services, we are going to offer that this year. It will take place before ESY. So it's a separate process. It's a separate qualification process as well. And this is really around from the closure of March twenty-twenty through the closure of June twenty, twenty-twenty as well. When students came back to school in as close to normal as possible of onsite instruction, the school teams had to gather data and then identify, offer a recoupment period. So offer, collect data, offer instruction, continue to collect data, and see if students recouped that skill set. And then from there, determine if they qualified for any recoupment services. So we are offering up to sixteen hours. Students might qualify anywhere from two hours to sixteen hours of that service. And again, that is determined by the IEP team. And meetings are being held with families so that they know what to expect. And again, here's just some slides around that process that I just briefly shared. And that it's based on IEP goals. Not all students will qualify. And again, we are communicating this through the IEP team meetings. All of that being said, is a lot of information. But I will circle back to the requests for staffing that we had made during our data presentation and connected to this as well. Again, that autistic support teacher is really to support the cohort of students that will be transitioning from elementary school to middle school. And then we've also requested to special education teachers at the middle school level so that we can work to balance caseloads. We can offer supports and services equitably between the buildings. Right now, we are not able to provide programming in the same manner. When I talked about the service delivery model, that service delivery model looks different between east and west because of the number of students, the number of teachers, caseloads, and how we are able to align our special education teachers with our general education teachers to support the needs of the students. So those requests really would support those things there, balancing the caseloads and allowing for greater service delivery. Again, these are the slides that were shared during the data presentation for the autistic support teacher and the middle school teachers. Some of the slides that we shared, the rationale behind that, the data, working towards more natural proportion in classrooms so that it's not overwhelmingly a large number of special education students, but that we better balance what that looks like. And then this would look slightly different. The only other thing that is on here that was not here previously is emotional support. And I've highlighted it, Middle School West. Something to note is that we have students that, that students attend schools that might have, we might have students with autism that are in their homeschool, but they do not require the district-wide program. The same thing happens with emotional support. We have students at Middle School West who have emotional support needs but don't need the district-wide programming that's at Middle School East. What we'd like to do next year is consider the staff we have and potentially offer additional emotional support services at Middle School West with a special education staff member so that we can better, better support the needs of our students with emotional needs. It is not a request for an additional teacher. It is, it could potentially be a reallocation of the staff we already have. And then before I conclude, I just wanted to share that we do have several things coming up. We have our special ed roundtable March fifteenth. But we are going to use that to also focus on our special education plan and the last component, which is the personnel development. And once we complete that, then we can, can finish working on our draft of that plan. And we'll also review ESY at that meeting. And then two other upcoming events that we are looking forward to is Rock Your Socks Day, which is March twenty-first, Down Syndrome Day for the extra chromosome. And then on April second is World Autism Awareness Day, which we are going to celebrate on Friday, April first. So those are just some upcoming events that I wanted to share with everyone this evening. So thank you for your time and your attention. Does anyone have any questions?
There's.
Yep. I have questions, but I'm wondering, are we going to discuss this at the superintendent's roundtable? Would that be appropriate? Are we, are you talking about this plan again or no?
The special education plan? Yes, that will be the focus at the next roundtable.
Okay. Okay, so let me just ask, going back to the beginning of your report, you were talking about parents were surveyed, and I believe you were saying that also teachers were surveyed?
Yes.
I'm wondering, will that information be shared with us in the report that's sent out? Or is that, how is that shared or is it not?
So what we're doing right now with the teacher survey, a lot of that will play into our professional learning plan. There were questions specific, and I can certainly share that with the board. I can provide the board with a PDF copy of the results that were shared with us.
Okay.
So that the board has that, and you can certainly review that. And then I will also summarize that. I think that would probably be helpful.
Okay, it might be helpful just to see too, you know, parents' experience in the district and just what the results were. Understanding that I think you've sent out a lot more, I don't know, eight hundred? Would that be right? Eight hundred and you got two hundred something back? Is that correct?
Yes. We reached out to all of our special education families. So eight hundred twenty-one families and two, about two hundred and fifty responded.
Okay. Just a second, sorry. I'm wondering, just the COVID compensatory services, when those are, those services are offered for those students that qualify, are they done like, kind of like ESY when they're in a classroom and you're? Or are they individual? I know it's individualized. But are you also able to group, your goal is to group students together so that you're in a classroom and teaching some students? Is that what the model is? I'm just wondering what the model is.
Yes, and I apologize. I didn't go into detail, but in my mind, I know exactly what it's going to be. Yes, it would be similar to that. We would be looking at our students and attempting to group them by similar needs and then offering those services. So again, as we're moving through that, we don't have the exact number yet. Once we have that information, again, I will be more than happy to share that with the board so you know exactly how many students we're talking about having attend. And again, what we will do is we'll issue that information to parents via a NOREP, and they can either accept or decline. And then we will work on staffing for those positions.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to say, I really appreciate all the work that you've done. Okay, thank you, and I just want to say I really appreciate all the work that you've done and administrations done and just getting that trajectory to really climb in the right direction, so I appreciate that.
Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Boyd. Move on to the student liaison's report, student liaison's report will be presented by Mr. Christian Seibel, Perkiumon Valley High School Junior, and Mr. Matt Schaefer, also a Perkiumon Valley High School Junior.
Thank you, we're sharing a microphone, so we really got to lean into this, but this is our student liaison report, a lot of good things. A lot of you know spring sports started today, lacrosse is actually trying out as we speak. But winter sports for everybody are not over quite yet. Our girls' basketball team had a great run at districts, ending up in sixth in District One, and now they're headed to the state playoff. They play tomorrow against Central High School down in Philadelphia, so support our girls, there's a live stream I'm sure you can find, but great season for them so far. Also, wrestling, which will be on the next slide in a second. I'll take this time to mention, I commentate the girls' basketball games, so great commentary team. All right, good, good time kill. All right, this picture, this is Kelly Kekos at regionals. Both Kelly Kekos and Cole Uker punched their ticket to states in Hershey, which will be, I believe, next week. So we're super proud of those guys and we hope that they bring home some state medals and some trophies that we can put up in our display cases.
All right, next up, we have the community tree planting event. I believe that's hosted by the Take Action Committee. Essentially, it's an event in which you can purchase a sapling for a tree for about $5, and then volunteers will deliver it and plant it at your home, or you can purchase a sapling to have planted at one of our school's properties. So here's a flyer here, you can find more information on the P V website, online, all that. Then next up, I would be remiss if I forgot to mention that our high school Spelling Bee musical is being performed in a little, a little under a month, only a couple of weeks until we get started. I am a member in that, it's a huge cast, it's a ton of fun. It's a comedy about young kids and, and it's really going to be a fun night, so please come. It's the 31st of March, the 1st of April, and the 2nd of April. Then our last slide is, we're just real quick, we want to give all of our students who are taking the S A Ts testing a quick shout out. This weekend, we're going to be headed to a couple of different schools around the area, I myself am going to Springfield. And we're going to be taking the S A Ts, so good luck to all my fellow students who are taking that. And Matt has something to say about our P V High School's T-shirt sale.
So it's a tradition at Perk Valley to every St. Patrick's Day, P V Inc., which is a great department we have, they make T-shirts and hoodies and all sorts of cool things at our school, it's a class you can take. They make a St. Patrick's Day shirt, and this year, we are selling the shirts, which I will plug right now, camera, get a look at this.
Ooh.
It's got a nice back to it, these are great, $10. Anyway, so basically, you buy a shirt and you say what class you're a part of. So if you're a class of part of 2023, like we are, we would say, hey, I'm buying this for the class of 2023, and our name gets put in the class of 2023 bucket, and whichever grade has the most tickets in the bucket at the end, get all the profits. I know for the upperclassmen, it'll go towards their prom, which is in about seven weeks, and those tickets are not cheap, so we're trying to get all the money we can, so if your kids want to buy a really cool, super green, super cool green shirt, I recommend buying this one and saying you're part of class of 2023, thank you. That's all we have.
Thank you guys very much, that was excellent. Move on to the president's report, first for the committees that we have, we asked administration to, obviously, we're moving back to the high school library. And for all of our committees, save the education committee, we've asked that administration reassemble this U-shaped diagram that we have here and make sure we have all these microphones that are able so we can stop the microphone passing game around. So this will allow the committees to be a little bit more organized in their presentations. Obviously, save the education committee, which gets a little bit larger, larger for crowd and we'll work on secondary issues that we can do to make those meetings happen a little bit more fluid with that in the Zoom presentations. Although the Zoom presentations will still be there, it, you know, we're really trying to push people to attend the meetings, that's, that's the easiest way to get things done and it keeps things flowing at a, at a, at a good movement, and then hopefully with the, you know, one, with the microphones that are out there, it'll make the process of how those meetings go a little bit more smoother. So that's one of the updates there. The second thing I wanted to talk about real briefly is I was, received an email from a parent a couple of weeks ago, and they asked me, how do they understand the dichotomy of the, the valley right now, of our school district? And it, you know, I really thought about that, and we talked a little bit with that parent about social media and how that could get you down a little rabbit's hole. And there are always things in the school district, as parents have talked about today with bullying and, and other issues that happening, that you can dwell on and focus on the negative. I want to also dwell on and focus on the positive things that happen in this community from a school district perspective, like the student liaison's report that we saw today, which was fantastic, you hear about the great things that are happening in the community, and the other aspects that happened through our nonprofits that happen, or organizations that run, from P V Power Packs and P V Woods Committee, to all the home and schools associations and all the volunteer hours that those parents do out of their own time, Coaches for Cancer with P V Y B, the dodgeball event that happened, the school shows that are happening, Polar Pop. So there's always two things that we can look at. There are obviously things that the school district and the administration need to work on to approve and that we need to work on together to improve on, but we can look at both the negative and look at the over, super majority positive things that happen every day in and day out in this, in this campus and the schools that we have at West and East, Skipback and Shwenksville and Evergreen. There are individuals from all different shapes, sizes, economic backgrounds and colors in and out of our school districts that are working together to bring this community together and all doing it for the students. And I want to focus on those positive things that happen and always remember those positive things. Anytime you get down a rabbit hole and think, wow, today was really, you know, a bad day, the last few days have been bad, or we're waiting for the judicial system, and that might move at a slower pace than some might like, and we're really frustrated about things. Recognize there are a lot of really good things that are happening, and sometimes a, a positive thought process really brightens everyone's mood and, and makes our students' lives just that much better. So I want to thank all the volunteers that do that work, from the home and school associations to the nonprofits, to the youth groups that are all around that work all these hours to, to make our community better. We don't do it for ourselves, we don't do it necessarily for our children, we're not isolated in that process. We're doing it to make the entire community better and stronger, and with that, I will move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. So for this evening's report, I have four points of interest that I would like to present to our board. A couple of them showcase our students and some of the recent events that have been happening in our schools, bringing our students back together, bringing them out and enjoying some of those pre-pandemic activities. I'd like to share some pictures from the recent walkthroughs and talk a little bit about the purpose of those board walkthroughs. I'd also like to mention some updated information around the Lenape Arboretum Event that's planned for April 10th, and then I'll talk about our health and safety transition plan. So this weekend, Mr. Seibel mentioned the high school musical, musical season kicked off this weekend with Seussical at East, and the kids did a really terrific job. I attended Friday night and it was very well-attended and the students did wonderful. If you have a chance to get out and see some of the musicals that are upcoming, West is in two weekends and then the high school's in April. They do a terrific job and they put in a lot of time to prepare. Friday night, we also had one of our more traditional art shows, Shwenksville's Art Show was up and running, and some wonderful displays of our students and their talents, lots of parents and students attending. In addition to the art show, the book fair was up and running, so there was lots to do for our families, and they seemed to really appreciate being able to come out and visit the school in that way. And then we had dodgeball, so dodgeball happened on Saturday, and we had lots of very excited individuals in both gyms, that was mentioned earlier. And again, lots of fun for our students in a way that takes them back to that something closer to the normal they know. Great attendance, I'd like to thank the foundation for their efforts here, this is no easy feat to organize. It's loud, it's really well-attended, the kids have a great time, and hopefully, that's the way they walked away this year. I did stop by and see that in action. And then went over to Hepburn Horsesham where our first robotics competition was being held, and the first robotics team, this is a very impressive group of high school students. They build this robot over here, and this robot has to shoot baskets and get the ball in the hoop, either the higher hoop or the lower hoop, and then it has to actually extend some hooks around a pole and bring itself up. This robot has to lift itself up off the ground and suspend itself for some period of time. But the students do really wonderful and impressive work. Dr. Moss's husband is actually the coach of the team, does a great job in developing our students, there were 35 teams competing there Saturday. So again, another very well-attended event, and our students showcased some really wonderful talents. They'll move on in competition too. So one of the things that we're getting back into this year also are our Board of School Director walkthroughs, so periodically over the course of the year, pre-pandemic anyway, the board was invited to walk through our buildings, and we would pick a different building and attempt to focus in on a different purpose and showcase some of what's actually happening real-time in our schools with our board. And this past week, our board walked through North Montco Technical Career Center and was introduced to all of the different programs that really are accessible to our students. And then we also walked through West later in the week, so an opportunity to get out and about in our schools and again, see firsthand teaching and learning in action, as well as, in the case of West, everything that building has to offer our students. I appreciate the board taking that time, and I know it doesn't always work in the schedule for all board members. Hopefully, it will before the end of the year, I really appreciate those of you that were able to attend, so thank you for that. So we have the Lenape Arboretum Event that is continuing to develop and be planned for April 10th. There is a land acknowledgement and welcome home statement that I wanted to share with the board in greater detail in addition to the April 10th event, but in partnership with Orsinus College and the Lenape Indians, there is a, an acknowledgement statement. You know, we feel really fortunate that these individuals are returning to some of the areas where they once lived and raised their families, they're coming back. And to celebrate and recognize some of that, there is a big event planned on April 10th. And in addition to some of the work with Orsinus, partnering with them in welcoming the Lenape Indians back to this general area in Pennsylvania, there is also a community day that's being planned. The board will be asked to sign this land acknowledgement form, we can talk more about that if there are questions, really just welcoming the group and extending appreciation for the partnership that we hope continues to grow. There's a comment in here about supporting the group when they return or, or visit us here with accommodations, Orsinus has provided some of the, the chief and the assistant chief with an apartment, and they're doing that free of charge, they're also affording them access to their cafeteria. So you'll see that statement in there, they want to continue to provide that for those that visit with us and lead, facilitate some of those conversations that we're having. So you may see some of these advertisements or flyers out and about on our website. All of them are taking us to that April 10th Community Day, which is really anticipated to be a really nice community day with a welcome home feast that will be hosted in our high school cafeteria, lots of different types of food. So look for more information on this event, and I hope you're able to attend, it's a Sunday, and there'll be lots of activities as well as a tour of what is hoped to be that Lenape Arboretum on the property of Easton High School at some point. So let's talk about health and safety transition, there's been some comments tonight. I think people are familiar with the fact that the Centers for Disease Control updated their guidance on February 25th. They changed their system, and at this point, we are in what they classify as a low level of transmission. And in the low and medium, they now have three categories as opposed to the four, low, medium, and high. In low and medium, they no longer are recommending the wearing of masks, we are in low right now. The Montgomery County Office of, Office of Public Health, excuse me, has also updated their guidance, they are aligned to the CDC. Because we look most closely to the Office of Public Health, we are obligated to do that because we have an Office of Public Health in our county, I want to share with you some of the information that they have in turn shared with superintendents. In a sense, it's aligned to the CDC. For Perkiumon Valley School District at this point, there are a couple of things that I would like to call out, I'll go to the third bullet. While the board will be presenting a draft plan this evening that is much more succinct in nature than the plan we had previously, I recognize that at the appropriate time, or until the, the appropriate time, excuse me, the Board of School Directors cannot take action on a plan. So pending the outcome of our case. However, in advance of that, I'd like the board to know what it is I'm recommending to them. Let me go back up to the first bullet. You will see in a minute, Montgomery County Office of Public Health is only requesting data from the school districts once a week. I am recommending we follow that and we only update our dashboard once a week. You'll see in a minute, we are shifting from the number of cases, from incidence and percent positivity to really a different philosophy and way of monitoring what's happening under the circumstances of the pandemic. Also, I would like to discuss with the board, put out there as a recommendation, that we are prepared to transition our lunchrooms back to pre-pandemic, so this would not be in violation of any recommended guidance around physical distancing at this point. Our principals are in favor of this, our students seem to be interested in doing this, so I would like to suggest that and entertain any questions that you might have about that this evening. So I've mentioned the low, medium, and high, what's important to call out is the metrics are different. They are no longer incidence and percent positivity, two of the metrics are related to hospitalizations. And that third metric is related to the number of new cases over a seven-day period. The philosophy has changed on the part of the CDC as well as the Montgomery County Office of Public Health. The philosophy is no longer avoiding transmission or monitoring transmission. It is now about preventing serious illness, that's the goal, and you'll see that in a slide. You'll see that in a slide in a minute that comes from the Office of Public Health. Some additional detail about the prevention steps that the CDC is requesting or recommending, excuse me, as part of the information on their website, there's a link here, and a snapshot of what is suggested as prevention steps at low, at medium, and at high. We are currently in the low level, which is good news for us. So why the change? So some of these slides are going to share with you some of the words, some of the messaging from Montgomery County. We have more tools available, available to us today, we have more resources, we have vaccine, we have boosters, we have some very effective treatments, medical treatments and therapeutics that are available now that weren't some time back. And here's that shift in the approach from preventing transmission toward instead preventing that serious illness or significant disease. The, the COVID hub, the data hub, if you happen to follow that, I often reference that when I looked to the incidence and percent positivities. The county is shifting away from that, they're going to pull that down, they mentioned that here, and they're going to attempt to set up their website to align to the metrics that the CDC is now recommending we monitor. So this is information about that. They continue to talk about layered mitigation strategies, and we're hearing more about, you'll see masks here. You know, lots of different views on masking, we're hearing more about one-way masking, the district will continue to offer strong or high-capacity, if you will, masks and respirators to those that are interested in those, K F 94s, K N 95s. But again, continue with those mitigation strategies as circumstances warrant. This is information, again, following along with the CDC, you've seen that language, isolation and quarantine continue. So if an individual is identified as a confirmed positive for COVID, they are obligated to isolate. If somebody is identified as a close contact, they are obligated to quarantine. This is code as part of Montgomery County Office of Public Health, and we're obligated to follow. So I'm incorporating that so that you have it as a reference. Now, they have changed some things around isolation and quarantine, and my, my little Zoom bar gets in the way here a little bit. There's reduced timeline for both quarantine and isolation. It does require masking. It does require masking for that time period, days six through ten. And we'll see some additional details about masks to stay and tests to stay. So again, ways to help navigate isolation and quarantine that avoid individuals missing school or work. The districts are no longer required to contact trace in the same ways they used to. The county is recommending we continue in cafeterias and high, high-risk activities, thank you, because those are the areas where it is more likely we will see the spread. They define an outbreak now. That's what we talk about, not so much linked transmission, but an outbreak as three or more cases among students or staff in the same setting. So again, something for our nurses to take on and consider as we monitor. Somebody mentioned a little bit earlier, our data have looked very good for the past several weeks. I'm really pleased about that and feel good about that for our students. Masks to stay and tests to stay will continue to exist, so I wanted to incorporate this. Masks to stay is for students who have been exposed and under quarantine. It affords them that opportunity to continue to attend school if they are willing to wear a mask, get tested on day five, and then continue to wear that mask days six through ten. Tests to stay is actually for staff. So a couple of months back, the county changed the definition of these two programs pretty dramatically. So tests to stay used to apply to both students and staff. Now, it just references staff that are household exposures and affords them the opportunity to continue to work, report to work, presuming they are asymptomatic and do not test positive when tested. They also have to wear a mask. But again, two programs that allow us to be a bit more flexible with individuals who have been exposed. We continue to advocate for symptom screening, so that daily symptom monitoring, if you don't feel well, don't come to school. And we maintain that in our plans and in our conversations with students and staff on a regular basis. Reporting requirements. For a long time, school districts had to report to the county every day. Now, they're obligated, our nurses report, our pandemic liaison reports every Tuesday. I am suggesting that we update our dashboard once a week on Mondays. We'll align to what the county is doing, continue to inform families that are interested. I am guessing we will eventually move away from that if things continue to get better. At this point in time, that's what I would recommend to our board we consider. So we, we have a draft plan to look at, and I just want to, the beginning pages look the same. There have been no suggested or recommended changes or revisions. What's happened here is actually a more succinct version, and what I want to call out is that when it comes to masking, so again, this is a template that's been provided to us. We needed to propose to the state, sorry about that, propose to the state what we were going to do in our efforts to maintain onsite school, considering within each of the categories, this template presents to us. Masking is one of them. It's the first one. It's very difficult for you to see now. This draft will be presented for the public once the board has a chance to review it. Masking is optional indoors and out, and there is a statement also in that first line indicating that the district will provide KF ninety-fours, KN ninety-fives to those that request them. Now again, our board, I recognize you cannot take action until we move through the case, the lawsuit. In advance of considering that, I wanted you to have this draft. Really, everything else is the same. We are not obligated to physically distance anymore, particularly at this level. Contact tracing, isolation, and quarantine will, will refer you to some of the information from the Montgomery County Office of Public Health code. I also talk a little bit about masks to stay and tests to stay. But again, an effort to really streamline the information and include the salient points around some of the things that we will continue to consider as we work to uphold health and safety with the new knowledge we've gained and these better circumstances currently under the circumstances or the pandemic with COVID. Okay, so just come back to those three recommendations. Update the dashboard weekly. Every Monday is what I'm suggesting. By level is what the nurses are suggesting. So how many cases at the elementary? How many cases at the middle level? How many at the high school? We prepare to transition our lunchrooms back to pre-pandemic. This has been quite a stress on our buildings and our maintenance custodial teams as well. Students don't love it as much either. And then at the appropriate time, the board considers acting on this health and safety transition plan B four. And with that, if there are questions about the health and safety plan, happy to entertain those at this point.
Anyone have any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much. Mr. Schubert, solicitor's report.
I have no report.
Board members actively participate in committees. Available minutes and notes on each committees are included in the agenda as well as on board docs. Are there any board members that have any reports to give? I will give one for policy. Policymaking is our primary responsibility of the board school directors, developing and maintaining effective policies that compromise both local specifications and ever-changing state and federal laws. Recently, from a PNN network, we have been reviewing items such as social media, board meetings, public participation, bid, bid and quotation policies. The foundation of the Policy Maintenance Program, or the PNN Network Newsletter, which includes new or revised PSBA guidelines, are recommended due to new or revised legislation, regulations, and court arbitration decisions. From local policy standpoint, policy has been reviewing and updating items such as student liaison selection processes, adoption of textbooks, informations on resource materials, and the next policy meeting is March twenty-second at seven PM here in the high school library. Mr. Keenan.
As you may or may not know, I was appointed to the MCIU board, and I underwent training in January. Just want to give a few highlights. The meeting in January, the new board members were welcomed to the MCIU. Fast forwarding, since we have February meeting, it's more recent. A couple of highlights were that there was a hundred thousand dollar grant to support the employment opportunities for special ed students accepted by the MCIU. Just a couple upcoming things. Well, in case you missed it, the, and we all may have missed it, or some of us may have missed it. The statewide Special Education Conference was just held, March second to fourth. I don't know if that was announced at the beginning during the Special Education presentation. And let's see, upcoming, the Education Diversity Fair at MCIU Lafayette Street Building from five thirty to seven thirty on April twentieth. Reminder, April twenty-second is Earth Day. Just be aware of what's going on that day. And April twenty-fifth, there's a organization, or there's a PSBA Day on the Hill, and the PSBA Day on the Hill is, you know, the School Board Association, and it's in conjunction with the, like, MCI, well, Montgomery County, the intermediate units, the school, statewide intermediate units are also sponsoring the Day on the Hill this year in conjunction with the PSBA. So anyway, that's just some updates from the last couple of meetings, and that's it.
Appreciate it. Any other board members? Ms. Mayers?
The Northmont Co. Technical Career Center, Dr. Russell touched on a lot, that we had a meeting, but there, a board meeting, but there wasn't, there's not much to report. Just looking forward to seeing the students having the opportunity to become more and more involved, hands-on, which is what they need as the restrictions are eased, so.
Thanks. Anybody else? The seventh bracket?
I, I won't update finance because that's on the agenda for today, so I'll leave that to Mr. Weaver. But the next meeting, I'll say, is March thirty-first. From a legislative perspective, the General Assembly has been in recess, recess since the last governor's, the governor's budget address last month to allow for House and Senate Appropriations Committee meetings. So there's not anything really to update legislatively. But just to note that the fair funding lawsuit closing arguments will be held on March tenth, so make sure you pay attention to what's going on there.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much. All right, looking for a motion for the consent agenda for the board meeting. The items represented standard business, and we have the consent agendas for seven oh one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, and eight oh one, two, three, and four. Is there a motion?
No motion this evening.
I apologize.
Don't find those.
There you go. So we'll move on to education. Mr. Dorr.
Thank you. Four point zero one, Mark's education update. Mrs.
Good evening, everyone. We have a couple of topics this evening. Summer programs, resource recommendations, Viking Academy, and then an update on our staffing. Starting with just a few things that we are adding to LIFT. You did approve the overall LIFT program. We are bringing to you this month the approval or request for approval for summer library. We, last year started by opening up two libraries, one at the elementary and one at the secondary level. For this summer, we would be utilizing Evergreen and Middle School East, and we would open each of those three days. So typically, it's a day in June, July, and August, and they are each open for four hours per day. We do various different activities as well as book selection, and we have two staff members per level each time that the library is open. So you'll notice that that is on the agenda for approval this month, and again, funded through our ESRS. Credit recovery and MVP and Edgysir kind of go together there. The two on the far right are the two vendors that we have contracts with for our online coursework that we utilize, whether that's in summer credit recovery or students who may be in our Viking Academy at the high school level. And you will notice onboard for approval this month is the opportunity to allow us to have students participate in that coursework and account for credit recovery. And then the credit recovery program itself is a program here at the high school for students in need of credit recovery in which they can report here onsite to the high school library. We have an advisor here who supports them in their work. Majority of that work might be online coursework. However, we also do solicit our own staff to see if they are interested in providing instruction to our students here onsite. And if we're able to staff that, that certainly is our first preference for that. It would be scheduled June twenty-seventh to August fourth, and it is three hours per day here again in the high school library. So those are items on the agenda this month for your consideration. Turned on. There we go. Next is curriculum materials. We'll speak a little bit about READ one eighty, which we have discussed in our education committee a couple of times since October. I just threw this back up here as a reminder that we did discuss this in our data presentation, and you can see the review of why it is that we're bringing this forward. But we were tasked to investigate a research-based practice that would support both special education and general education students that are reading below grade level. And so the recommendation that we are bringing forth is HMH's READ one eighty, and this slide just outlines for you what our process was in terms of that investigation, and really the special education team utilized some research-based websites and so forth that take the time to really do studies in these particular interventions, and then they rate them based upon their effectiveness. And you can see on there why we have selected READ one eighty. What I really want to focus on, though, is our initial proposal, if you've attended education committee, was for a three-to-six-year subscription for about a hundred licenses focusing on sixth to twelfth grade students. But after further consideration and feedback from the committee, we did go back to the drawing board and reconsider, given the fact that you just approved STAR Reading last month. We'd like an opportunity to implement that, to look at what tools partner directly with STAR Reading, the interventions that may partner directly with them, and support both general ed and special education. So we'd like some time to do that, but we do recognize that we have students with IEPs that are in need of this explicit level of instruction. And so at this point, we are bringing back a revised recommendation for fifty licenses for one year. That way, we can see the impact of READ one eighty and assess and bring back to you in a year any future recommendations to expand the program. And we would specifically be focusing our high school students that have IEP goals and instruction needs. And again, we would monitor that. So you'll notice that on this slide, the costs are much less than what we initially presented at our education committee. The student subscription and teacher packages are slightly less than twenty thousand dollars, which we would fund through ESRS three, and professional development is a slightly over ten thousand dollars. It is an extensive program that requires quite a bit of professional development, but we can fund that through our Title II funds as well. I would just also like to point out that the use of the ESRS funds here, we are being very cognizant of planning for the future and if renewals of these. Typically, all of the things you approve for curriculum are funded through our Ready to Learn grant, which is about a half a million dollars, and we keep track of when these subscriptions come up. So we are keeping that track so that we have the funds to be able to support any new implementations in the future or renewals. And here's just really what our implementation plan would be. This is, as I said, a pretty extensive program that requires quite a bit of professional development, which would need to happen really this summer. So we'd be able to do some initial identification of the students that would be using the program, the staff, and then really schedule that training this summer, work on scheduling and the time that would fit into the student's schedule, and then really be able to implement in the twenty-two, twenty-three year. So that is a recommendation that you will see. The rubric and so forth that we use is also attached in board docs. And then Viking Academy, we did have a much more detailed discussion about Viking Academy currently and what we are recommending for the twenty-two, twenty-three year in our education committee this past week. I, there are quite a few slides in there. I'm not going to go through all the details. I'm going to jump right to a summary slide, but I'm happy to pause and answer any questions you may have. But in summary, we are one of two districts in Montgomery County that has offered a fully synchronous program for our elementary students. We're very proud of that and that we were able to stay committed to that throughout this entire school year regardless of what the class size numbers have been. As of March eleventh, this was the change to the third trimester. Secondary students had an opportunity to make changes at the semester, and we've accommodated students really at any point throughout the year that have reached out that they were looking for a change, whether into or out of that. But we see the, another large group of students, we have about eleven or twelve students that are transitioning back to in-person instruction as of the third trimester, bringing our number of students in our K to five, what we would be projecting for next year, down to thirty-nine students. Now, that's excluding K because we don't know with the new enrollments how many of them may be interested. But our class sizes currently do range from a class of four students to a class of thirteen as of that March eleventh. We have a total of five and a half general education teachers, a full-time teacher in each grade, first through fifth, and then a part-time point-five teacher in kindergarten for one section. We also employ one full-time special education teacher to support students in the K to eight spectrum that are in Viking Academy. Our cyber charter school enrollments, they did spike during the pandemic. We saw a great increase. They have come back down in the twenty-one, twenty-two to be relatively comparable. We had about forty-five students pre-pandemic. We have about fifty-one, fifty-five, something like that now post-pandemic. So we've seen them come back down a little bit. Our current Viking Academy programming, when you think about the staffing of those six and a half full-time and part-time employees, and you think about the tuition costs, because for our secondary program, any students that are part of Viking Academy and receive instruction through Warren County or through MVP, there is a per pupil expense ranging from three to five thousand dollars. So when we put all of that together, we do also have three students in K to five who chose a completely asynchronous program. Just to give you comparison sake, there is about a sixteen thousand per pupil expenditure for our students in this program. So we have put a lot of time and thought into this, and you know, before I go into what's on the slide here, I do want to commend the teachers in the Viking Academy program, particularly at the elementary, have done an amazing job. They, you know, our parents, you've heard, have been happy. Our students have been doing well. We do believe, however, that in-person instruction is the place and the best for our students. But they have been doing an amazing job with all of the resources and being hired relatively late in the school year to get started. However, our recommendation, when we look at the numbers, we look at the financial piece to that, and again, what our belief is about how to best provide instruction to our students, is to continue to utilize our partnerships with Warren County and Montgomery Virtual Program in our secondary, sixth to twelfth, so no change there, but to discontinue that synchronous portion in the K to five setting. Our elementary students that want a virtual option, we believe we can provide them with a robust and competitive-to-our-cyberschool option by enrolling them in Warren County, which is partially synchronous, which means that they would receive all their English Language Arts and Math instruction in a virtual synchronous setting every day. Their other coursework is asynchronous, of course, with opportunities to connect with the teacher. Based upon those enrollments in the K to eight, we would need to continue to investigate if we need to maintain that special education teacher. We wouldn't know that until we see the enrollments of special education students in Viking Academy in that setting, if we would need that position to continue. We do have those five general education positions from Viking Academy, of which one and a half of them are tenured teachers who we feel very committed to in ensuring that they have position. positions. I'll talk about how that fits into our staffing in a moment, and then the other positions, certainly our HR department will work with those staff members. We are making this recommendation to you early at this point in time. We'd like to have some conversation tonight to know if we are ready to bring forth a resolution for action next week, because we do feel that we'd like to give as much notice to any staff members who may need to seek employment elsewhere. So I will stop there before I go on to how that impacts larger staffing, just to see if there's any questions or thoughts or comments on this topic. Okay, seeing none, I'll go into how that impacts the larger enrollment and staffing projections. These slides probably look very similar to you from month to month. I just update them based upon the March enrollments, and really, there, you will not notice any change here on the elementary, we're still projecting those same numbers, and you will notice on the far right bottom, I know it's small, we are projecting a decline of one position within the elementary program. I do want to point out kindergarten, and this is something we will watch closely from now and all the way through August and September. As of March 7th, so just today, each of the buildings gave me an update, and I'm pleased to see, because a week ago, these were much less, but they have increased a little bit. However, they are still trending a little bit smaller and lower than what we would typically see at this time of year, so we're keeping a close eye on that. We project kindergarten enrollment based upon what the current kindergarten enrollment is. We kind of anticipate it'll be slightly around that or slightly less, so these are definitely less at this point in time. We do still have registration dates coming up. Skibek is the only school that has completed registration. Evergreen is started today, and all the principals, I spoke with them today, they are actually going to be planning some days in April as parents, now that they're talking and, oh, the neighbor's child is getting enrolled, so forth. There's more conversation in our community. We've had some calls from families, and we want to make sure there's other opportunities for them. So we'll keep you updated on that. Middle school projections, again, look very similar. I'll point out to you that sixth grade, we're keeping an eye on, and certainly those eighth grade numbers, you notice I still have that chart on the bottom there. We share staff to help support in the eighth grade, as we are currently doing in the seventh grade, so you'll notice those projections. Right now, we're projecting two positions at the middle school that may become one depending upon, I mentioned, we're also looking at the sixth grade numbers and the balance between east and west. And our high school is not as clear-cut, so really, we're just sharing with you here what the total enrollment looks like, but we're not anticipating any additional staffing in our programming there. So these are the five and a half positions that we have been talking about for a while now, the first five there. Mr. Weaver has included those five positions in the budget. Within the next month or so, we'll be looking at how we can possibly fill those positions from reallocations from within our own staff, and then that will impact the budget presentations that Mr. Weaver brings forth and potentially reduce that five additions. And the .5 English Language Development, we've talked about before, can be a reallocation from our existing staff. I do want to talk just a little bit about two positions because I know there have been some questions about them, and I'm happy to answer any of them, but thought I could provide a little bit of background. If you were to look at the MTSS facilitator and the inclusion, not the inclusion, the instructional coach job descriptions, you will notice some commonality there, and I want to call out really what those differences are. So at our data presentation, we pointed out for you that our high school does not have the same structure nor the staffing in place as does our K to 8 setting for an IST teacher or a reading specialist to really facilitate that multi-tiered systems of support and that delivery of that program. And so, this is really showing you, we have students that are struggling, whether academically, behaviorally, attendance-wise, that an MTSS program would really benefit, and we'd also like to see that same type of position that exists in the K to 8 exist in the high school setting to help with a number of things. So the main responsibility of this MTSS facilitator position is on the left here. It really is assisting principals in leading what that program looks like. That means analyzing our performance data, developing a structure for interventions. Our elementaries have a schedule with an IE period intervention enrichment. Our middle schools are in progress, our high school doesn't have that yet, and we really need some additional support in terms of that. What intervention should we use? Somebody who can be, you know, boots on the ground, using these things like READ 180 and STAR, and providing feedback and researching and investigating. Guiding our teachers, collaborating with teachers to implement strategies, serving as a liaison between administration and teachers, and implementing interventions as needed directly with students. On the right are those other additional responsibilities that probably look similar to what you see on the coach job description, but really, the main responsibility of this position is supporting that MTSS process. Again, every building K to 8 has this position already, maybe the title is different, the high school's the only building that doesn't. And I call out in this one, this is a teacher leader in the building, because you'll notice when I talk about coaching next, that's a teacher leader across the district. So when we talked about coaching in particular, we talked about the fact that we really wanted to support math in our middle level because of the data that we saw in terms of the decreases in our student performance. So just some information, looking at the job description, again, on the left, I gave you a smattering of what those responsibilities are. This is really job embedded professional development. This is direct support to teachers, it's classroom observations, it's a coaching cycle, it's mentoring. It is all about effective instructional practice in the classroom. How do I model them? How do I collaborate with you, just to have another head there to talk about, how might we group our students? What's the best tool to use with our students? They do provide professional development, they support implementation of curriculum. For example, Into Reading is being a brand-new resource and curriculum implemented in our elementary program. One of our coaches is greatly supporting that implementation, getting into classrooms, providing professional development, and giving feedback as well as helping with curriculum documents. We also support modern resources. You see in the, on the bottom right there, Mr. Creedon posed for the implementation of our interactive panels that Mr. Ganesh and I have been working on, and I can tell you, our middle school teachers love them. We just saw them at West being used on our walkthrough. We have, one of our coaches has supported the successful implementation of that, and I really think part of why it went so smoothly was because she's in the building every day, she's there supporting them one-on-one, what do you need? So it's gone really well. We have, one of our coaches supports primarily inclusion practices, and that has gone well, that she can partner with teachers directly, Janet and Special Ed, how do I help meet the needs of this student? They also assist with induction and lots of things there, but again, they work district-wide, and they do straddle both Dr. Boyd's Special Education Department and our Curriculum Instruction Department, straddling the two, ensuring that we are thinking about both in all the decisions that we make. You can see what we focus on, and I just point out again, we have three instructional coaches right now to serve a district of 432 staff members. And you see on that list, we do not have one that focuses specifically or brings an expertise in the area of mathematics, which is definitely a need for us. I'm not going to read these, but there are other slides in there to give you some background on what coaching is, some links in there for you, kind of the mother and the father of coaching here, if you're interested in doing any research about them. I'm just going to point out what I have in the bottom there. Think about every athlete that you know, no matter how good they are, they have a coach. Great teachers need coaches too, and they should have that benefit of having somebody to collaborate with them. That's not just the teacher who teaches across the hall, but somebody who brings a level of expertise to their craft, not that the teacher doesn't. There is a stigma in education, I'll put it out there, that if you need a coach, that must mean that maybe something is wrong with what you're doing, and that is truly not the case. It is relatively new for us, so some of our teachers are getting more used to having coaches in our classroom and being able to support them, but I'm really confident and would very much like to see us grow this team, to the point that we could have one in each building would be great. I also just point out for you, again, I'm not going to go over any of this, but our coaches, you can see the three of them, we have a video that we used to market at the beginning of the year, they've created their menu of appetizers and main entrees that a teacher can say, hey, I'd like to work with you on that, and we have a monthly newsletter that they put together as well, sharing instructional strategies and different resources. Before I maybe get to this, I do want to point out too, there were a question about, would our staff members more appreciate maybe an intervention, like STAR Reading, but STAR Math, or something like that? We are investigating that, we have a committee. It will be meeting on March 9th, and we have several vendors coming in, so we hope maybe another month or two months for sure, we'll be bringing a recommendation forward to you. Again, the difference is job embedded professional development versus a resource that students might use to reinforce their skills, and oftentimes, that does tend to be something virtual that is helping to support them in maybe small group instruction. So here's our staffing, again, this looks pretty similar, 5.5 recommended positions. You see that one or two at the middle school, just not sure yet, but there could be those savings of three, so really, it's an add of 2.5. However, if the board should approve a resolution to discontinue the Viking Academy at the elementary, I mentioned, there's those one and a half positions that would offset that 2.5, because we would have positions for those staff members. So that would be, again, an impact to our budget that Mr. Weaver would present, and in about the next month or so, you'll be able to see some of those changes. So any questions for me on anything? Yes, Dr. Campley?
You answered most of the questions that I had sent you with, but one of the ones that some staff members had brought up was the idea that coaches aren't necessarily, you can't require a teacher to access a coach. Is that accurate information that they're sharing?
So I would say to you yes and no. So, for example, in induction, part of the induction requirements is that they have a coaching cycle with a coach. So when our new staff come in, and we're really hoping, you know, those are the staff that as we're acclimating them, we can get them used to what coaching is. If a staff member is on a performance improvement plan, we can absolutely require that there may be a cycle with a coach. However, I will be clear, the tacit of coaching is that it is a peer within, you know, your collective bargaining unit, they are not evaluating you, they are not reporting back to your principal and saying, Laurie did this or did that, whether it's great things or things they need to work on. So there is that piece of developing relationships that really is key to having this be successful. And again, because it's new, we still have more of that to do with three of them to that large number of staff.
And do you find that the current staff is utilizing? Because I got a lot of feedback that it was always the same select few that tends to utilize the coaches and not necessarily as many that would really need it or benefit from it.
I think certainly we could reach more staff. I will tell you, the three of them are extremely busy. We are collecting data that I'm happy to share with you. I have asked them, we have a Google form that when they work with a teacher, they record, you know, that, you know, just so we can be able to collect data on how many teachers that we are putting, getting our fingers on and what that looks like. So I'm happy to share some of that information, but I think we could expand, but I think that we are strapped with the three that we have in terms of their capacity at this point in time.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Ms. Wade?
I have a question about the implication of the virtual staff. I saw the one and a half offsets, but how was that funded? How are those teachers funded? They were funded through ESER?
They were funded through COVID reserve funds. I'm looking at Mr. Weaver to confirm, yes. So when the board approved that last year, remember, I think that was an approval somewhat later in the game, the board, you know, was very committed and wanted to make sure we had that option available. Those six and a half staff members are out of COVID reserves, and so they were budgeted for for this year, so if we want to assume them in...
One and a half were?
Yes, all of them, am I right?
And weren't they already part of our...
What you're talking about is the contract switch, and so those contracts exist, and they currently would be assimilated as presented or used to offset other needs.
Okay.
So that it would be a saving.
I'm just...